Permission study session for August 8. We'll start out with public comments.
Of course.
We have none registered today.
Very good, all right. Okay, somewhere, okay. Thank you. We'll go on to items for presentation discussion. We have an agreement with Kansas Gas Service for installation of natural gas at Proximity Park. And we have Lynn Lee with Kansas Gas Service.
Uh, maybe not.
Yeah, they're just joining.
And Lynn, are you with us?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
You can hear, yes, thanks.
Good.
All right. Who will start?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Pro-Tim and Commissioners, Blaine Finch, City Attorney. Lynn has been working with us for quite a while. As you have on the memo from Melanie Landis in your packet, this is part of the base grant that the city was awarded, the $5 million. One of the three improvements that we wanted to do is to add a natural gas line to Proximity Park. This is the last major utility that is not there. Kansas Gas Service traditionally does not extend lines on a speculative basis without an industry desiring it. However, with the way that development is moving, and as we've seen even with the recent Panasonic deal with De Soto, when interest arrives, they want to move quickly, they want to get buildings up, and they want to have those utilities available. So, part of the attraction of Proximity Park to the prospects that have already looked at the city and the county is to have those utilities in place, and this is the one that is still to come. So, we're working with KGS, and they've been great partners in this, to come up with this solution where it will be a 25-75% match, and we will then have a chance for reimbursement on the back end. So, as customers come to the park and purchase natural gas, part of the proceeds of their natural gas usage will come back to the city to reimburse the taxpayers for the city's portion of this extension. So, we believe this is a fair deal all around. It will make the citizens of the community whole as we have development occur in Proximity Park, and it will also allow us to move quickly to get this line in place as we have prospects that are actively looking at the community. So, I want to thank Lynn and her team for the work that they've done on this, and she has any comments for you, Mr. Mayor, I'll step aside for a second, and then we can take questions.
Great. Thank you, Blaine. Yes, so we are excited about working, partnering with you guys to get this project done. We've talked about it for a while, and so I think this solution with the grant request and the 25-75 split, you know, for funding really gets this project done a lot quicker and sooner so that the site will be ready when you guys actually, you know, get the customer in place. So, we're excited to be able to hopefully be forward with this project. And happy to answer any questions that you all might have about the project.
I guess I had one. I just noticed this comes from Eisenhower and 23rd Street intersection, is that correct? So, we haven't had anything over this direction since this time?
So, we are going back to where our town border station is to connect and so that we have a greater pressure and volumes that can go to the park. So, we'll also build a new district reg station along with this project.
Okay. So, it goes along the southern edge of the park, but if somebody wants to buy one of the northern tracks, will that be extended later?
For it within the park, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, it looks like the line goes along the southern edge of the track, but if somebody bought a track in the northern part, but I can add to that.
Yeah.
We're getting it, we're getting it to the park, and that's the best place to get it to the park. And if those who want that north of there want gas extension, then they would pay for it in the normal way. Contact KGS, and that would be their responsibility to bring the line to them.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just to elaborate slightly, this is good in a number of ways, in that one, going back to the town gate, their 23rd and Eisenhower allows for an upgrade of existing capacity along that area, which we also see as a growth corridor for the city, as well as then south past Love's down 59 and east along Kingman Road into the park. So, this is not just a win for future customers in the park, but also opens up all of that growth corridor, both along 23rd and then down 59 on both sides of the road. So, this is a well-sized line. I think it will handle the prospects that we've had looking at us and.
So, these businesses along the highway currently could tap into this if they wish later, right?
They could certainly become customers of KGS at that point if they were, they were so inclined.
Any other questions? I understand you want to consider its approval request at this meeting. How do the rest of the Commissioners feel about that? I mean, to me, it looks like a freebie of opportunity for us. This is what we've wanted for a long time, and we've delayed it for some reason, so.
I agree. My move that we approve the agreement with Kansas Gas Service has listed in our agenda.
I'll second.
Second. All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good job. Next, we have the auto municipal airport hangar rental rates.
Thank you, guys.
Of course. Thank you, Lynn.
Have a great day.
You too. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Pro-Tim and Commissioners. Looks like we've got another one joining. There we go. So, I've asked our FPO, Mr. Riedu, to join me today, and then Mr. Landis and one of our board members is back here with us also. And so, to follow up, we had a conversation about this last week, and we had some direction from the Commission to maybe go back and take a look and, and see what it would look like if we were to do larger increases than what we were discussing originally. And so, in that discussion, there were some, there was good discussion both with the board and with our FPO. And so, we took a look at, you know, what those increases over time would be, and then how that would impact if we just did an increase. And so, what you have before you and what we're trying to show you here is increases that we see as viable in the schedules that we are seeing related to other regional airports, and the availability, taking into consideration the availability or lack thereof of hangar rental space. And so, what you see in your memo is the numbers that we came up with. We made a decision to do that as a flat rate. It was kind of calculated on a percentage, but there were also some decisions made related to, and especially with the jet, or jets that we have in the hangars, some decisions made related to regional cost and what is perceived as, as kind of a heavyweight, so to speak. We have a jet in the airport that has sat there now for three years, Jim, is that used to run, and has never moved. And so, that jet, what we find with our current rates is paying way, way less than what it would cost them anyplace else. And that's exactly the reason that jet is still sitting there. And so, as you can see, we made a pretty substantial increase in that particular rate, simply because, quite honestly, either they're going to pay us more, or we'd be happy to see them go someplace else, is really what that amounts to. We could put two or three planes in there that would likely be moving, would likely be buying fuel, would likely be doing a lot of things that that jet sitting there is not accomplishing for the airport. So, I did also put in this memo, just as a reminder to the Commission, you know, where these funds go, you know, so that you're aware. And I think beyond that, Jim, comments?
Not really, other than I think the 15% for the single-engine aircraft was sort of what we would have ended up with after three years, and we just raised it 5% per year. The jet, you know, what we call several different airports, New Century at Gardner, we charge $2,000 to start, and if it didn't fly a couple of times a month and buy fuel, then they would charge more per square foot. The twins are sort of the same deal. They charge by the square foot, and if they don't fly, they charge more. They have two prices. Both of our twins fly regularly and buy a lot of fuel.
And I think what we saw here, too, is after a conversation both with the Commission and going back to the board, taking another look at the regional costs, is that, you know, let's just get in line, you know, let's get our rates up in line where they belong, and then we will be back, you know, we'll see, we'll track, you know, what is going on with rates as we move forward, and on a yearly basis, we will reevaluate, you know, where we're at, and make sure that we're keeping up so that, you know, it's kind of like a lot of other rates that we've talked about in the past, you know, we need to make sure that we're not, we're not remiss in going back and making sure that we're charging appropriately for our services.
I like the idea of looking at this each year. I think we've been five years, I think it said here, so we, I think we probably kind of fell asleep on these rates, but I think it's a good idea to bring them up to where the market is right now. And I first had a question about the jet going up to 1,000, but I understand your philosophy behind it now after we explained it to him, so I agree with that. Anybody else have any more comments on this? These would be effective, how soon would be the first of the year?
It would be January 1st. The thing that we have asked is that August 30th may be by our next Commission meeting, a regular meeting, which I think is what makes, you know, if we could address this, if the Commission is ready to address this, then we would have our marching orders, so to speak, and we would be able to give our current customers plenty of notice, you know, as to what their increases were going to be, and then these would be effective January 1st.
So, will the rest of the Commission?
I appreciate you just looking at it again, and I think it there, it appears to be fair.
Any else have any comments? We can either put this on the study session again for next Monday, or go ahead and push it to the 17th, which would you prefer to do?
I don't think, I mean, I don't think we're in a huge hurry to, there's no reason not to keep it, just in case individuals have.
Okay. So, let's move this to the next study session, it should be the 15th, and then we'll see where we go from there.
Okay. Sounds good. Appreciate, appreciate you.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate you.
Appreciate it.
That's good. Next, we got to review the lakeside lots, bids opening, bid openings, and Blaine Finch again for us.
Good afternoon, again, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We held the bid opening back on July 28th for the lakeside lots. There were two bids received. Those are summarized on page 10, I believe, of your packet, on the Bates numbering. And you can see that Joe and Kristen Randall submitted a bid for lots 12 and 13. Van Knight Homes LLC submitted a bid for each of the lots and had the higher bid on lots 12 and 13 surpassing the bid of the Randalls. So, those are the bids for your review. Staff recommendation is that you accept the higher bids on the lots, as that's why you went to the sealed bid process. I'm available for any questions you may have.
It's pretty close to what they, the lots sold, whether, I don't remember, what they sell for, mid twenties or somewhere in that range?
Some did. I thought we had 16, 17, 18,000 on some of those. This is a little bit higher, I think, than we've seen on those lots in the past.
I'm going to entertain this. I had thought, after I looked at this, and is there any appetite for pushing to sell lot 10 now that comes around a little bit toward the end of the cul-de-sac? I didn't know if there would be any appetite, anyone else wanted to consider?
I think that was the one that we were kind of saving for potential parks, wait, I'm going to go over your table, is that okay? Or was it?
10, and then, yeah.
I'm sorry, was it 11?
Yeah, I'm not in favor, I'm not in favor of selling any more lots until we absolutely have to, just because, again, and I've said it time and time again, I feel like a broken record, nobody ever comes to us and says, let's develop a park, and we have the opportunity to utilize some of the space to develop a park where there's not really a park in that part of town, or at least, yeah, in that area.
I just think with this interest we've had in this, and I think there's someone else interested in that lot as well after we could get a price for it, but if we're, I think we see it both ways there. I know we do need more parks, but you're right, it's kind of like competing forces here in my mind, which is better way to go. Zach, do you have an opinion on that?
I think it's 14 was one we kept right for until we knew about flood, because that could be a potential.
Yeah, it's kind of about the valley.
Yeah, until, yeah, because that one may in time, because that would be between other residential properties, which I think would be perfect for another residence if in time, lots suited for that. But I like the idea, like you said, of keeping some of those other ones kind of reserved for that park there, especially I think with higher density with the, those apartments so close right there in proximity. You know, Kansas Park's still quite a ways away for, if kids or anybody's trying to walk down 15th, and this would get something kind of closer to the school, I think, in those higher density areas.
Commissioners, if I may, the, after doing some examination related to the flood plane in there, the only lots that would be at issue as we see it right now are the two lots where the overflow off of that pond runs right between them, and those are the two lots right on the east side.
13, 14?
14, 15.
Sorry, I got on that. Sorry.
This is showing where the overflow is at. I think the overflow goes right through here, so I think it's 14, 15. I think it's those first two lots passed here that would be at issue just because of that overflow pipe, and it's just almost impossible to build on those, yeah. But otherwise, there was no flood plane issue that was perceived.
On which lot, no flood plane, considering the others made.
On any of the others around the cul-de-sac there, everything was, was up out of the flood plane at that point.
So, there may be capacity to, so 11, 12, 13. So, you're saying nothing in between, you couldn't use 14 or 15?
14 and 15, because of that overflow pipe, there is just no way to build against that or over the top of it or something of that nature. That would just be a no-no, so to speak.
Could you build on 14 knowing full well 15 stayed empty?
Simply because they, they ran that, that line.
And that's.
Right down the property line, basically. It would be a hazard to build on either one of those lots.
14 or 15.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, jump in if you have any comments.
Well, I, I would certainly, as I talked about before, be in favor of selling 10. Sounds to me like, I don't think there's a consensus for that. We keep talking about taking land away for a park. I've been here three years, and there's still not a park here. So, I would hope that if, after these sale, that these sales, that we could probably get some movement on something over there. I know we've talked about a walking trail, a shelter, and a few other things. So, if, if, I would be in favor of if there's movement on some of those things, certainly holding on to 10 to see what happens. But, quite frankly, if there isn't any movement, that might be a suggestion that's had in the near future, again.
But, Mr. Mayor, we did do, we did make some modifications to the, to the pond in anticipation of developing it as a park, right? So, I mean, there's movement there, it's not like we haven't done anything.
Correct. Yes, yes. The pond was dug deeper, about six feet, I think more so to help rid some of the moss, overgrown moss that was in the, in the pond. And I know there's a discussion about an air raider now. I think it's already been purchased, it hadn't, just hadn't been installed. It wasn't necessarily the pond that I was concerned about, it was more the walking trail, which, as mentioned before, there's, there's a, a lot of kids over here, especially with the apartments, and that walking trail would help with that walk from 17 to 15 for sure. Along with, you know, I, I watch a lot of kids and families come over here and fish, and if that shelter was there, that would certainly give them some cover from the sun along with maybe a place to picnic or something like that. So, like I said, I'm in favor of either or, keeping and/or selling. I would just hope that if we keep, that we do see some of this movement that we've talked about of some sort of park entities that, that are, that are, you know, we keep talking about.
Dennis, if I may, I'm sorry I keep interrupting, but.
So, there are some things in progress. First of all, our mayor is right, the air raider had been purchased and simply had not been installed, so they are working on that as we speak, quite honestly. That one will happen, I hope, very soon. We have already purchased two park benches, and we have tables available if we make that decision to set some out there. And then we are putting a plan in place to, to, in the easement, which would be on the west side of those properties, to build that walking trail that's being talked about from 17th Street to 15th Street as a connecting line. All of those things are in process, just so you all are aware, those things have all been talked about, and we are not sitting on our hands. We are in the process of getting those moving forward.
Good. Thanks, Dan. Looking forward to that. Okay, do we need to do anything to accept these bids?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask if there's consensus today to accept the, one or the other set of bids, that you would direct me to prepare the contract, and we'd have that on your next agenda for approval to enter into the real estate contract with the wedding bidder.
Okay, so you're suggesting we would, you would final approval on the 17th or today?
Yeah, the consensus say would be direct me to prepare the agreements for your review and those on the 17th, so I need to put a name and the numbers in there, so.
Everybody okay with that? See, we've, contract, we'll put on the 17th.
And that would be for the Van Knight Homes LLC.
And then for the high-end, we have all the cultural lots, yes. Good.
I agree.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
You did your job. Didn't need to auction at this time.
No Commission on this.
Yeah, right. All right. Let's look at number four here, we have a request for garage sale at Forest Park, and Melissa Reed will do this for us. Melissa?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we proceeded application for use of Forest Park on August 12th for a garage sale at a brick shelter. Attached in the packet on page 11 is your application. After referring to the city attorney, we looked at City Parks, Article 1, Section 812, which requires permission from the governing body in order to look at this application.
Have we ever done this before? Anybody know?
Not in 15 years of this here.
Curious, okay.
I have some question. The purpose of the event is listed as minivan sale. Are we selling minivans? Is the person planning on selling minivans? And is there?
Yes. Ultimately, they're asking to use a shelter just because of the heat, they wanted the coverage. I don't know, they're not going to be selling minivans, it's a garage sale.
This application has to do with alcohol being served, I guess that just happened to be the form we've got that is closest to this application?
Yes. Yes, Mayor, didn't have an application for this, since we hadn't seen that, so we just used this application to try to get the information needed.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, just to note that it's, it's an unusual request, one that we've not seen. Typically, you might recall when the Power of the Past Tractor Show or the Old Mary River Run and the Over the Road Game Car Club come before you for these kinds of uses of the park where there's some sort of exclusivity, or some sort of, frankly, profit motive utilizing the park to, to sell an item or to offer for sale, we felt this fit within that code section that required commission approval. It's not an itinerant merchant, it's not a peddler, you know, working off of private property, they're asking to basically use public property for a, a private sale. So, we felt it was necessary, and it came closest to those entities and organizations that made use of the whole park for something, and they needed your consideration and guidance back to us as staff on what you want us to communicate back to the.
I've got two concerns, I guess. One is we set a precedent so that people could certainly use the park for anything else, and secondly, what will the cleanup look like after the fact if they have anything unsold, or if we trash it, collect it, dispose of, and any other issues there? So, I'll just start off that discussion with that, and Melissa and the other Commissioners say.
Do we have anything along those lines, like the cleanup, if I rent it for a birthday or anyone rents it for a birthday party, anything like that, you know, typical use, nothing for sale? In that, is there a contract signed that says they'll keep it, you know, clean, maintained, anything like that?
So, Dennis Starks, our acting public works director, and I do believe there is an agreement.
Yes, they do sign an agreement to, to police the area. Our crews are ultimately responsible to empty the trash out of the trash cans, and I have to say that, from my experience, that usually isn't the case. Usually when somebody's doing a birthday party or a family reunion, whatever that may be, everybody has really been good about making sure that when they leave, they leave the place, you know, presentable, and oftentimes the trash cans may be running over, but that's what we do. Those are family events, which is what a park's used for. Those are family events.
Yeah, with no experience, I don't think any of us have experience with this request, so, yeah, I don't know what that looks like.
Is the applicant a city resident?
Yes.
I would say from a safety perspective, I really like the idea of this. Parking there, frankly, is a lot better than parking alongside a street. Obviously, we're probably all driven around on Saturday mornings, and some streets get crowded with a lot of cars going to garage sales and people walking across, carrying things. So, I can see the benefit in having something like this in a place that's controlled, there's not traffic, there would be ample parking.
It is a Friday, is that correct? Let's see which one. Okay. Excellent regard, that park may not be as busy as it might be on a Saturday. So, I guess they're requesting for an answer today, because the 12th will be after the next study session. Mr. Mayor, are you on still?
I am.
What's your take on this?
I'm in favor of it. I agree with you that I think, you know, thinking outside the box on the way we use, utilize some of these assets that we have here in our community is a, is a great idea, just like what Josh Walker's doing out at the Econo Lodge, turning that into single-family homes, you know, using the park for something else that somebody else really hasn't thought about is a great idea. This may turn into something where, you know, certainly not an every weekend thing, but more, used more often. And certainly, I had the same concern about trash cleanup, but if, if they use it and they don't clean up, I guess it's just easier to say no to the permit application next time.
That's kind of how I was thinking on the, like, at face value, I'm not really excited about it, but I feel like maybe we could give it a shot and see if it works, and then we know in the future, you know, if we need to develop some sort of application just for that, or if it is going to be a no in the future if this turns out poorly, and so I'd be okay with it.
What's the, will the Commission, you have a preference on one way or another on this?
I would be in favor of approving, kind of using it, like you said, kind of as a test case, and if it goes poorly, we can know for the future. But, you know, this might be a great opportunity to kind of open the door to, you know, other things like this in the future, and the citywide garage sale utilizing our parks possibly in time. And I think, you know, it's, those buildings are, they're for people, residents of Ottawa, so I think we shouldn't get in the way of people using them.
I do think, if you go, go ahead and do this, and it becomes popular down
if you go go ahead and do this, and it becomes popular down the road, I do think you ought to give some thought to a charge for commercial applications in the park. Because the use of that park is there for families to use for families. It's not primary purposes, not for commercial application.
Sarah, what do you think?
I'm not real sure. Honestly, I'm just going to be really honest. I'm not, I'm a bit hesitant, but and I am concerned about what you had said about it setting a precedent, because I think it does. So I'm not real sure.
And if you do that, and maybe it's too late for this application to have some kind of a charge, because I agree with you, I think there ought to be some kind of a some kind of a, and there'll be some more trash than normal, I'm guessing, to pick up, and then it'll be expense to the city to be responsible for that.
Was there an applicant charge?
I think it said $20, $25.
Is there is for this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor and Commissioners, we did not charge that this time, just because that's for a special use permit for the alcohol, for the ABC processing of that. So we did not charge for that permit. We could grab, we could get that if you would like, but we did not, since this is a different type of application.
And I think the minivan thing, I think they crossed out the word moving van, made it sound like a big sale, but this is a minivan sale, so I don't think it's a van for sale there particularly. I'm guessing they meant just what it would fit into a minivan, but well, if they need a decision today, we need to make a decision today. So I guess I'd leave it up to someone to make a motion on this, or you want to?
Yeah, I can't wait till next study session, so.
I would make a motion that we approve the temporary event, your special event permit.
I'd second that.
Okay, all right. Let's do a roll call vote on this. Melissa, are you available for that roll call?
Absolutely. How do you vote, Commissioner Kaler?
Let's start with her.
Yeah, don't hurt me.
It's fine, I'll vote, I'll vote yes.
Commissioner Graves?
Yes.
Mayor Purtem Skidmore?
I'll vote no.
Mayor Crowley?
I vote yes.
And Commissioner Clayton?
Yes. All right, that motion carries. Thanks, Melissa, for your help on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, you guys, you'll inform the applicant?
Yes, I will.
All right, thanks.
On that, before we move on, could we kind of have something in place to maybe look at if this does go well? Like you said, designing something, getting something in place, an apparatus that could capture these in the future. Obviously, we don't need to have it just depending how this one goes, because if this one goes terribly and we decide to scrap it, but.
We will monitor and, yeah, we'll get back with you at one time.
Mayor and Commissioner, we do have an application for a garage sale if you were going to have one at your home, just so they could get a permit for that, so we could look at that form as well.
All right, we'll go on to the comments by the city manager now.
The only thing I'd like to ask is Director Hall, just to give you a broad update on the MIA investigations.
Thank you. You will recall that we have a scheduled kind of a timeline of when we're going to do certain things with this request or proposals. We have to request proposals out. And on the short timeline we have, we're trying to get any proposals we have to you so you can make a selection. Prior to all that happening, there's this team of staff that are reviewing them, evaluating them, and will bring them forward. We did put a deadline on there to get proposals by August 8th. And in talking to different people with projects, some of them were having a hard time meeting that deadline, which was not surprising, but there was a lot of interest, and there was potentially some good projects out there. We wanted to make sure we accommodated those, and so we've extended the deadline to noon this Thursday, August 11th. It gives us less time to evaluate them and, you know, make preparations for the meetings. So we had to balance the need to, you know, accommodate people, be a little more reasonable about putting that information together, with the need to be ready on the, you know, first session, I believe would be just, it'd be the Monday after the 15th. And so that's where we're at. There's there's some interest, and there's some some, you know, projects that have been floating around for a while, apparently, that could come forward and be transformed a bit until coming MIH to meet those goals. So that's where we're at.
That's great. This is what we wanted. We wanted a lot of interest in this, and we've got it, it sounds like. Now, if those who don't get it through this first round, they'll be eligible to apply for the second round. Is that later in the fall, or how much time is their deadline on the second round?
KHRC has told us that they expect a FED and RFP from them, their RFP
Right.
in November for the second round.
Okay.
And that means the application deadline would probably be in January. So what that probably means is we want to be ready in anticipation of that RFP, or not wait until the RFP comes out start requesting project proposals to retain that interest. You know, there are other resources out there too beyond MIH. They're quite a bit different, but I think that, given where we're at with housing, and this is happening all over the country, housing is just not affordable for a lot of people. And and so where there's a need, there are tools out there, and better understand what those tools are and being prepared to use those tools to help these projects happen. So this really goes, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn to the manager, but this really goes beyond MIH, just just doing things to support housing.
That's great. Any more questions?
Great program.
Looking forward to it. Thanks, Mike. I'll get that update. Anything else? Comments by city commissioners? Commissioner Clayton? Dennis Scott? Commissioner Seth Kaler?
Yesterday was the last day for our pool to be open, and I think that the pooch plunges tomorrow, so if you want to take your pooch, or maybe it's Wednesday.
We're announced.
So if you want to take your pooch to the pool, we should do that, but it's a nice amenity that we have in our community.
Anybody concerned about your pooch, there's a shallow end, so.
Yeah, if someone wants to take a chino, they can take them for me, yeah.
Definitely need this zero entry pool, I get that.
Yeah. Anything else, Commissioner Graves?
We have an Ottawa Main Street Association Board meeting tonight, and I'll update everyone after that.
Good. Appreciate your work on that. That's a lot of work on that. Good. And I don't have anything else. Commissioner, Mayor, I'm sorry, Mayor Crowley, you have any comments?
I always say negative things about social media, but there, I guess there is some good things about it. It helps remind me of things like belated birthdays, and I'd like to start with our Commissioner Kaler. Happy birthday just a few days ago, I believe. Yesterday was our library director's husband's birthday, Brett Sartier. And today, I can't see him if he's still here, but today is Cal Lantis's birthday, so happy birthday to him too. That's, that's all I have to say.
All right. And I, I'm going, did you get?
Oh, I didn't get, no, I'm up first, yeah. But I do have one. I actually thought of one. Tomorrow night is OU Fusion at here in town, so I plan to be there. I believe somebody else.
So Commissioner Clayton, behind you are the things for Fusion. Please take those with you when you leave.
I can do that. All right. And I think I'll join you there. Anyone else want to write on the vote?
I'm going to be there off and on. I have a softball meeting in between, so.
All right. We'll make it happen then, so.
Bring a fan. Yeah, thankfully, it's not as hot as last week.
That's right. It's at Legacy Square, not downtown like it has in the past, so make sure we all have that.
But just in downtown.
And a very important event tomorrow, too, is at lunchtime, there will be groundbreaking for the Victory Chrysler Dodge at their new site on West 20, East 23rd, I guess it would be, whatever that address is. And we will have lots of shovels there. I don't know who will get it, but let's get it done. So I'm really glad that you're here, and let's just bring them a great welcome. So I'm glad to make an investment in Ottawa. Nothing else, we will go to an executive session, and I believe it's going to be recited by our attorney.
Mr. Mayor, a proper motion would be for an executive session for the purpose of attorney-client communications, for the purpose of engaging in confidential conversation with the board's attorney for a period of 15 minutes with the city manager and city attorney present with the commission.
Someone make the motion.
I would make that motion.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Let's say we reconvene here at, let's call it four till five.
We'll do that, and a personal decision is made, and just be dismissed after that, so, okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Good.
Thank you.
I will be at the noon meeting tomorrow. I actually will be.